Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of February 10th. If you could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and for all.
Thank you so much, everyone. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council. The first item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, but I would like to withdraw GG1, GG2, GG3, GG4, GG5, and maybe attach that with Agenda Item F1, just for discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent.
Okay. The next is submission of minutes of previous meetings, Items A1, 2, 3, and 4.
Make a motion to approve the previous minutes.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, is an advertised public hearing. This is to consider the petition of Chomp Spadell for the Persimmon Group LLC doing business as Persimmon, 31 State Street, request council consideration for transfer the Class BV intoxicated beverage license to Samuel Glenn for Toasted Bun Hospitality LLC, doing business as Statesman Tavern at the same address. This also considers the vitling license. You have a objection filed by Gregory Mancini of Sinapi Law on behalf of a couple of liquor distributors, and you have a recommendation provided by the acting fire chief and town administrator to approve. It is an advertised public hearing.
Okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing and just remind my colleagues that we'll hold our, not questions, but comments until the public hearing is closed. So is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Please.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I am Sam Glenn.
Welcome.
Nice to meet you all. You know, we've been working on this project for about four months, kind of in secrecy, as we tried to do things, didn't want it getting out prematurely, but I've always loved Bristol. I've been in the restaurant business my whole life, and I lived, I called Bristol home for the last three years, and just recently moved to Warren. Coincidentally, I used to live right across the street from Persimmon before this whole thing started, so I'm very excited at the possibility of opening up a business in this town. Opening up a restaurant in this town is even more exciting, and, you know, I look forward to a prosperous future here in Bristol.
So if you could, a couple of things. First is, if you could tell us, well, I'm going to give you 30 seconds. This is a wonderful time for you for a free commercial about your new place. So why don't you tell everybody about the new place, or the potential new place?
Yeah, so what we're going to do is, you know, a lot of people might know my reputation from Chomp Kitchen and Drinks in Warren. This is going to be a second concept. Since I've opened two and a half years ago there, you know, we've been very well received, you know, our hospitality, our food, our cocktails, our beer, everything. You know, what we're hoping to do in Bristol is much of the same, a different concept. We have a lot of creative people on our team that want to do something other than burgers and sandwiches, not to say that those don't certainly have their place, but we're looking to do a little bit more refined food, more entree style, and really pay homage to that quintessential American tavern, you know, a historic town like Bristol. I can't think of a better place to do it.
Excellent. So I have a question. Looking through the plan and the design scheme, I see some new bar and new construction. Could you talk to us about that?
So the current bar at Persimmon is four seats, and what we're looking to do is extend the bar to six, six more seats for a total of 10. The police department was there yesterday. I spoke with them about, we're not adding new seats, we're just kind of redistributing the seats, the floor plan. There are six seats where we're looking to extend the bar. It's a four-top and a two-top. Those are six seats. So we're just looking to make those as bar seats as opposed to dining room seats. Our concept is very cocktail-focused, you know, craft cocktails, craft beer, wine, and I can only speak for myself here, but I like going and sitting in a bar and having dinner versus sometimes going into a dining room, sitting at a lower table. I'm a tall guy, so I like to, you know, be able to, I'm a little bit more comfortable at a bar. So we're looking to do that. The wall that we would be looking to deconstruct is not load-bearing. It doesn't have any, there's not any structural integrity to it, so we've been consulting a few different, you know, experts, contractors, and they don't foresee any major problems.
And when are you hoping to open?
We're hoping to open, you know, just like, you know, the restaurant business is kind of difficult to project an opening, but we're hoping for April.
April. What questions my colleagues have?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Wish you the best. I guess my question would be for the outstanding request that is pending. Are you willing to address that from Horizon and Rhode Island distributor?
Sure, absolutely. It's, every restaurant has net 15, net 30, what have you. Since they are still an operating restaurant, they have an outstanding balance, so they are in good standing with everybody. There's no liens, there's nothing against that. It's just the way the business works. You know, if you looked at my restaurant now, you'd see that I have a balance with other vendors. You know, nothing goes beyond 27 days. It's just kind of a, the way it works in the town. So in an effort to protect the distributor in the event that they dissolve the LLC prior to this being transferred, they would collect their money, but I've spoken with Chomp, and there's no problems. They're going to operate, you know, for the next month. We've tentatively set a closing date. We're not firm on that 100%, but all of that, the balance for every vendor will be paid in full prior to closing and prior to the transfer of the liquor license.
You explained that very well to the public. I wasn't asking. It is more of because it's attached to the petition, we have to address it.
Sure, understood, yeah.
Getting back to Chairman's question about the new construction. Chairman, your microphone, please, hold it. Getting back to Chairman's question about the new construction. You show quite properly the bar that exists that we're familiar with, so you're really sort of doubling the seating, aren't you?
Doubling, doubling bar seats, technically, yes.
Yeah. Will most of those patrons there be eating dinner as well as having a drink?
Absolutely, yeah. We're going to, just like Chomp, you know, we're a restaurant. This is going to be a restaurant. It's not going to be a bar, it's not going to be a nightclub, it's not going to have an entertainment license. I'm in the restaurant business, I'm not in the-
You're probably familiar with our longstanding policy to encourage restaurants with alcohol privileges, but not to encourage barrooms unless they're properly designated as such.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. I think that's important.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I closed my restaurant in Warren at 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock at night. You know, we would stay open a little bit later here, but we're not going to go anywhere near curfew. You know, our menu at our current restaurant is something that we're going to, as far as a beverage program model, you know, it's going to be, you know, not a place where you could have, you know, five or six drinks and spend $10. It's going to be more refinement, more focused on the craft of infusing our own spirits, of making our own juices, and really dedicating that, those extra bar seats, we want people to be able to see the craftsmanship that goes into the cocktail that they make, how we pour the beer, how we pour the wine, and really put on a show, so to speak, you know, to really emphasize to people how much we care about the ingredients that we're using, how much we care about the food that we're producing, the cocktails that we're making, hospitality that we're providing.
Good. Now, the other question is, on these two small bills that are the subject of a complaint, has Persimmon paid those now, or are they intending to?
It's not a complaint, per se. I would say it's just more of a formality for them. No, they're not in arrears beyond, you know, I can't-
Well, it's only about $800 or so, the two-
Right. I can't, I can't speak to their finances. I don't feel that's my place, but I've been assured by their counsel and by Champa Lisa that they'll be taken care of prior to-
You wouldn't take exception if we made the payment of those, the condition of approval, would you?
No, I mean, I think that that's probably how it would have to happen anyways, so, yeah, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
How are you? Welcome to Bristol. I, when I first saw this at the last, on the last agenda, I thought, oh, no, a tavern. That's like thinking more of a bar, and then I saw your, your menu, and then I read the article that you were Chomp, so that's a, that is a great place and a little hard to get into, I must say, but-
Thank you, I thank.
No, it is, no, it is, it is, it is. It's always good in the summer when you've got the outdoor seating, but, so I had a couple of, a couple of questions. And the first one that struck me, as a restaurant, as you're describing, was your 12 o'clock closing time for Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. That, for what I know about most restaurants, unlike bars, and particularly in that area where you are located, that seems late to me. I feel like it, I would, I would rather see that around 11:00, but I'm not sure what other people think, but that just is what struck me. And the other is, when you were talking about the bar seating, I thought that we had an ordinance that limited bar seating to six.
And that is correct. On, is this on? Thank you. Under Section 1782, BV licensed establishments must have no bar available for patrons which has more than six seats, and there is as well an 11 o'clock closing time restriction.
So speak to us about that for a second, Amy. We certainly, I think we have a place or two that has more than six seats, if my memory's correct. We can make that stipulation here right now, or is, tell me, talk to us about that.
Grandfathered, I think.
If, right, there may be some, I'm not sure when this ordinance was passed.
Is it a town or state?
Town.
Town.
And I see that this section was most recently amended February 2015. I'm not sure if that amendment-
That was just a number of licenses, but that's been, that's been there for a while, but not all that long.
So some of the pre-existing establishments may be considered grandfathered, but because this is a license transfer, I don't think it would qualify as grandfathered if they're adding new construction and new bar seats.
I think in the, like, I think what happened, like, I think the restaurants that were here for a long time and had bars, other than service bars, they were allowed to continue, but, I don't know, I might go back, like, Dave Barboza was here, so it's going back, like, a lo, several years ago. When I first came back on the council, I think it was already, which was like '04, I think it was already in place, that there was no bar seating allowed at all. All bar, all new licenses were service bars only. And I would say, like, in the last two or three, two or three years into this council, the new ordinance went in with up to six seats. So I think that's just like a little bit of the history on that.
And is that, I mean, I can, I can think of 10 or 15 restaurants in this town that have more than six seats at a bar. Is that just for new construction, or is that-
It'd be for new licenses as of two or three years ago.
So this is a transfer license, correct?
Correct.
So it's not new license?
Correct.
So is that grandfathered in, or is that for you guys to determine?
It doesn't currently have more than six seats, so it wouldn't be grandfathered more than that. So said another way, if it had 15 right now, then it would be grandfathered for those 15, but it does not have those six. So, and Amy, if I'm correct on this, even if we chose to feel differently about this, then we can't unless we change the ordinance.
Correct.
Okay. So it isn't, it's not a decision that can be made, it is-
It doesn't appear to grant the council discretion.
Okay.
And could we petition to change that ordinance?
I suppose you could, sure.
And what's the timeframe for something like that?
No more than three years. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. No. I did that with a straight face, too, no.
I think that orders, opens a Pandora's box, I mean, frankly, I mean-
So do, I know where you're going.
It's a long, it's been a long debate we've had to even go from service bars only to the six seats. I mean, I think it would be easier to take the six seats and put some high-top tables where people could still see, like, your bartender's doing what they're doing.
The one problem with that is that partition wall right there, the, the four-seat bar in the restaurant as it currently stands is kind of tucked away in a corner, and, you know, for, for our concept and what we've been conceiving for the last four months, you know, it is certainly a possibility, but it's not something if we had our-
Druthers?
If we had our, thank you, I was about to say that, but if we had our druthers, we would certainly, you know, wish to have 10 total seats. I don't think, I can certainly understand where you guys come from with, you know, a huge bar as big as this room just being a bar, but, you know, with our track record and what we plan on do, to do here, you know, I can assure you that there will be no, you know, late-night parties or, you know, any sort of binge drinking or anything like that. This is just simply to change the concept, to change the interior aesthetic of the restaurant, so when people walk into the restaurant, they don't think it's still Persimmon. And not that there's anything wrong with that, but we're our own restaurant, our own concept, we have our own identity. A tavern is, you know, a place where people used to gather and conduct business and, and conduct personal business, and, you know, a tavern is a place where, you know, we could all very well see each other, you know, after this, you know, and that's what we want to create here in this town, and, you know, having a bar is a big part of that. You know, bar is where people meet each other, it's where they converse, it's where they conduct business. So it's really part of, the whole concept is built on this.
So what I would say is that, obviously, we cannot say yes. It's not even an option.
Right, I understand that.
But we could certainly have more dialogue about this. Councilwoman Prell is very correct, is that, that your situation may be unique, but the ordinance doesn't, can't be that unique. So it does present an issue for us, and I think that's important to say out loud, but that's not part of the dialogue for this evening.
Right.
We can't go this way, but what other questions do we have? I know, Mary, you were in mid-question, so-
No, my, my only thing was, and maybe it's covered under the ordinance, was just the 12 o'clock time on the weekend.
And it is.
That struck me. I wasn't thinking about that in the ordinance. I thought the six was correct when I, you know, when I saw the seating, but those are my only two things.
I just remember reflecting on, on the past years, I'm looking at the administrator, and I think he remembers quite well the hourglass brossery of that discussion of the seating at the bar, and I remember, I'm sure you remember it, too.
Sam, I just first want to say, welcome, welcome to Bristol, and thank you for bringing your business here.
Thank you.
I, I looked over the design, and I'm, I'm in support of your, your plan, first of all. I think, you know, I understand that part of your business plan, there is a number connected with each seat, and I know you run a very great business in Warren as a restaurant, so I know, you know, it's going to be first-class, you're going to do a good job. So I asked my colleagues, I think we need to step back and explore the ordinance a little bit and make sure we are looking at, looking at a case-by-case basis, if possible, if it's possible to explore that. Based on the business plan, how much does each stool bring in as far as a, you know, if you, if you were going to, if we were going to follow the ordinance and you just went through with the six, what do the extra two actually bring in? Do you know?
I mean, off the top of my head, you know, going off of numbers on our projections, you know-
Is it detrimental?
It, I mean, it's a significant amount of money, yeah. You know, it's upwards of the, you know, $25,000, $30,000 a seat over the course of a year, so-
It's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money, so $60,000, $90,000, depending on what you, you know, how we distribute those seats, you know, for, for our concept, and based off of numbers that, that we have that we can vouch for versus the projections that we have, it's not much of a deviation between, between those numbers that I just gave you. It's pretty spot-on, so it is something that's important. I think on a case-by-case basis, I certainly appreciate you, you know, putting yourself out there and, and requesting that.
So I feel.
And, you know, the, it's, it's part of the atmosphere, and it's, it's part of the aesthetic restaurant design. You know, you ask any, if you ask any restaurant designer that goes in there, they're going to recommend that we would do the same exact thing that we've already, you know, planned on doing. You know, so we want something that is aesthetically pleasing, that, that shows that we have changed a little bit, not too much, but it mimics, or it complements the concept. And I think more bar seats is, is part of that.
Well, I think that, I mean, like you said, it's a discussion for another time, but it does open up everybody that we've, we've said we've limited. It just changes, it creates a, a lot, a lot of issues in the, in the town for a lot of people, and I think it would be easier at this point if you could come up with another way to make a bar area, but maybe not the bar.
What's the definition of a, of a bar?
But I mean, I just wanted to say one other quick thing, though, and I'm just curious, did anybody look at the ordinance before, like, did anyone suggest that you look at, see if the town had any restriction?
This is the first time I've heard of it, to be honest with you.
Pardon me?
This is the first time I've heard of it, to be honest with you.
So no one looked at, so you didn't like think you or whoever's working on this project?
Well, I mean, I operate a restaurant in Warren. You guys have a lot of, I mean, some similar laws, ordinances. You know, I petitioned for a new liquor license there, the one that currently exists, and it was, I mean, Warren is just like you guys are, very business-friendly. They were all for it. You know, we had eight seats. I asked for outdoor seating, I asked for a variety of things, and they were, you know, there was no issue. You know, I, we have an attorney, you know, we have, you know, we're all, you know, lawyered up, so we have lawyers with us, not here tonight, but, to be honest, you know, this is the first time I've heard of it, because if there were other restaurants in town that only had six seats, I would think, okay, you know, there's obviously some sort of law that, or ordinance in, in the town that prohibits more than six seats, but, you know, I go to five or six restaurants and there's more than six seats, so, but I understand that that's grandfathered in.
Yeah, so certainly we can have more dialogue about this. It sounds like we can, you know, we're open to at least the discussion of it, so is there any other questions in regards to this applicant and for the public hearing?
I'm just going to make an advertisement, Mr. Chairman. Not by example, but, you know, through our community development, they do such a fine job, we're making so many strides within the department and with our economic development coordinator, Jessica. Any new businesses coming in, they should feel free to look at our ordinances and business models, so that way it could expedite any caution to the wind of a, a business model.
Can I get the ordinance number?
It's Section 1782 of the Town, 17-82 of the Town Code.
Is there any other questions? Did you have any other questions for us?
How would I petition to have another conversation about this?
You can reach out to the clerk-
Okay.
-Mr. Lucirillo, and he can walk you through that process, no problem.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
I would move the public hearing be closed.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So we had some discussion about, obviously, we talked about the bar, we talked about that, part of that new construction came up with this, and we talked about hours of operations and the requirements to, and Amy, correct me if I'm wrong here, was 11 o'clock was the latest?
Correct.
Okay, all right. What other discussion do we have here?
Well, in regard to the bar, I would suggest that we specifically designate the limited number of seats, so that it doesn't grow-
So up to six, if you will, as the ordinance allows? I'm not, I'm not putting words in your mouth, I'm asking.
Yeah, well, right now, there are four, and on the left end, he can have two, which is six, but I think where it's six foot six, he can really only have three because they'd be awfully jammed together with only a little more than a foot and a half. So I think there really should be four and three to seven, I think it should be limited to nine.
You're moving it, move it up to nine?
It can only be six. Six is the limit.
So the ordinance, Alzey says the maximum it can be is six.
Is what?
Maximum of six.
Oh, okay.
It can be no more than that.
So we've got to solve that, okay.
Right.
Right. Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make a motion that we grant the BV intoxicated beverage license to be transferred from the Persimmon Group LLC to the Toasted Bun Hospitality LLC at 31 State Street, with the hours being Monday through Sunday, I mean, Monday through Wednesday, 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. And I do have one more question for clarity, Mr. Glenn. Would Sunday be the 4:00 to 10:00 also, right? Sunday evening?
Yeah.
Okay, so Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Sunday will be 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. Thursday, Friday, Saturday will be 4:00 to 11:00 p.m.
Okay.
With the maximum seating capacity at the bar as specified through this meeting of six per ordinance, along with all town ordinances, state laws, and recommendations of the police department and town administration, and all departments, I make that motion.
Could you add to that about the outstanding balances as part of the motion?
And with the outstanding amounts from Rhode Island distributor and Horizon be also taken care of once this transfer is done.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion for discussion. I just, I would like to revisit the amount of bar stools that can be allowed. I think every business, case by case, we need to make sure we, before we limit, we need to make sure we look at every business plan and make sure we're giving every business the right leg forward that we can to make sure they thrive in this town, and I just think it, you know, with the, I just think you're, we're limiting a business without necessarily understanding all the ramifications, so that's just, that's just me, I just like to have an open discussion about it at some point.
May I suggest, because the complexity of the, of the motion may be getting to be a little far-reaching, that if that's going to be a second motion, then that would probably be, be more appropriate to, to have a, you know, an agreement to perhaps look at the ordinance for next time, because that way, you would have to actually deal with that specifically, but the, it may complicate the transfer if that is like part of it.
Okay.
All right, just, I think it's cleaner if, if you leave that ambiguity out of it-
Okay.
-for the transfer purposes.
Okay. So I just second my motion, and then we'll talk about the ordinance another time.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
The, the next item is ordinance 2016-01. The council will recall that there was a, a different version of this that had appeared previously, and then based upon some, I believe it was Supreme Court rulings, that had been temporarily withdrawn, but the solicitor does return and say that it is now appropriate to consider this, this portion of that original ordinance, and this would allow tax exemptions for certain renewable energy systems. This is the first reading.
Make a motion, this constitutes the first reading, Mr. Chairman.
Second. I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Why that date of March 15? Is that in the state law as well?
I believe everything is married by the state law.
You're going to apply before March 15th. Why, why that date?
I believe that is a deadline in state law for, for tax exemption applications.
So this was drafted to be consistent with the state law?
Correct.
Secondly, renewable energy, of course, is something we're all interested in and we want to support.
Sure.
But I think these ordinances that deal with it should say what renewable energy, I mean, is it, obviously, it'd be windmills, and it would be solar. Are there any other renewable energy elements?
You know, um-
Well, what, gee, they're all-
Well, we'll have to check. It may be defined in the state law that's referenced in the ordinance. If not, we can certainly add a definition of renewable energy system.
So just to put it succinctly, my question is, what is a renewable energy? And let us say what it is.
It's a good point. It's a good point. I reached out to Chris Curran, he's from the Department of Administration in regards to this particular ordinance, and there is a multitude of possible state laws that are happening, as we all probably know, maybe as many as 15 for this, and Chris assured me that the legislature would be sensitive to the fact that locals like ourselves, low town and cities, have already passed some of these, and they would be sensitive to what we've done already. The point behind that is that it costs money to make a new ordinance and putting everything into the books, so they are, they are aware of this going on, and they will be cognizant of that as they move forward.
And I think the General Assembly and other municipalities as well that have either already passed or are considering similar ordinances are reviewing the impact of that Supreme Court decision, which recently came down in the last two or three weeks, so we're we're still taking a look at that and trying to determine what effect, if any, it may have on this draft ordinance.
Could you sum up what the Supreme Court decision was? Just like very briefly, what it was about?
It involved the town of North Kingstown, and the Supreme Court did find that in that particular case, the town did not have the power to tax a solar energy, a solar farm or solar-producing equipment. But it wasn't, wasn't necessarily a general blanket ruling because the decision contained a couple of points that the town had not argued that certain definitions in state law applied to the system. So, I think we're still reviewing the impact of that decision and trying to determine whether it means that municipalities completely lack the power to tax solar energy systems or whether that's a more limited ruling.
Truly, the benefit here is that if you're a homeowner and you're looking to do this, part of your calculations are what is the total cost. This will help make that calculation that much easier. It's appropriate. It doesn't, it doesn't cost us anything to put this in. Obviously, we're not taxing anything that's being put on someone's home. But this, I think, speaks to a lot of things that are important to this town, which is saving energy. So, and this helps homeowners be able to do that. So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Just wanted to say thank you, Chairman Klow, for bringing this forward because I think it's a great ordinance because it's gonna, it's green, it's saving money for the taxpayers. I just wanted to know who is eligible under this ordinance. Is it, it's going to be residential, commercial, agricultural? What else? Multifamily is eligible?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure that those people are, they know under this ordinance that they're eligible for this, this savings to make sure people take advantage of it.
Absolutely. It's a, it's a universal application ordinance.
Great.
All right, thank you. That's all I had.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item is items D two, also from, from Mr. Glenn regarding his request for a vitroling license.
Again, make a motion to grant the vitroling license to the Statesman Tavern, thirty-one State Street, with all the hours specified. Previously, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Sunday, four to ten. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, four to eleven, with all the apartment, department approvals and state laws and ordinances.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Also from the same petitioner, request for sidewalk use license. You have recommendations from some to approve and some to deny based upon the available portion of sidewalk.
Well, I think we have to reject this because we have a very well-established and good ordinance governing sidewalk dining with a prescription specifically in definite dimensions of what you can do as a function of the sidewalk width. And as we're pleased to receive, raise careful measurement of it, this does not have enough width. And I think anybody who walks along that sidewalk would realize that it does not have enough width for tables. So, I move that we reject this petition.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Amy, are you familiar with this ordinance? Just before we vote on this, if you could just share with everyone why the motion was to deny?
Uh...
I know there's not enough space, but what is the minimum requirements and what does this have?
Nine feet.
The requirement is, differs depending on how wide the sidewalk is. And for sidewalks between nine feet to twelve feet, the minimum is six feet of unobstructed passage. For sidewalks over twelve feet in width, there, it's a little bit different. Minimum of six feet plus fifty percent of the width of the sidewalk beyond twelve feet of unobstructed passage. This particular sidewalk measures seven feet, so the required area of unobstructed passage is six feet. And the code compliance coordinator found that this would fall short of that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that.
I just have a question. And, and maybe I'm just forgetting this, but it's, I was sort of taken by surprise to see the two different recommendations from two different department heads. I thought this was mostly with the code compliance officer and not so much with DPW director?
Interesting. I had exactly the same question.
Yeah, because I don't remember seeing it from DPW. No offense to our DPW director, but I, I think we just, I'm not sure how it got sent to.
No, it was just...
I know. Yeah, because...
It was not meant to be, but it did happen. So, he did reply to the request.
Okay, so it is just that code compliance officer?
No, it should not have been.
Okay.
I talked to Kevin this morning and asked exactly that same question. And I asked, why are you saying to approve? And he said, no, I didn't. And I said, I have no objection to it because he was asked for his input. So, it's just the process that is there.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Lou, with the same ordinance pertaining to D four, would you want it combined for the same motion?
If the council so chooses.
Yeah, I think they did.
So, that would be D three and D four would be a denial.
Oh, which is D four? Oh, sidewalk alcohol, yeah.
So, the motion would apply, is what I hear, for D three and D four. There's a motion and a second to deny.
Yep.
All in favor to deny?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, you have the petition of Janet Maloney on behalf of Our Lady of Mount Carmel School, one twenty-seven State Street, request one day dancing and entertainment license for April eighth. I believe there is, we did get some late items from the police department. There is a recommendation which I just received. It says, I find no reason to deny the petition's request. And they are reminding the petitioner about the provisions of the town's noise ordinance. So, that would be a...
I would move that we agree to this with that condition.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck. Have fun.
Okay, the next is the petition of Joam Adiris for St. Elizabeth's Church, five seventy-seven Wood Street, request for one day dancing and entertainment license for March twelfth. There's a late item recommendation from the acting, rather, the fire marshal. And what the fire marshal is suggesting is that the applicant should contact the fire department one day before the scheduled event for site inspection to ensure the arrangement of the space, that the arrangement of the space complies with the Rhode Island Fire Safety Code. And...
That's a reasonable.
I don't know if I have any others. Yes, also from the police department, similar recommendation and similar notation about the requirements of the noise ordinance.
Chief Maravera?
I just have a quick question. Because usually, these are standard at St. Elizabeth's. I'm just thinking of the timeframe of the day before for a site inspection. Is there any way or protocol? I'm just asking if the site inspection of their intentions could be done beforehand. That way, I just wouldn't want to see an event of tickets purchased and then something fall through where they have to cancel it. So, I'm asking because I'm not familiar with the protocols, so...
If they have a plan that they can submit prior, it would be reviewed prior.
Okay.
There was not a plan available at the time of this application. So, with that being said, we'd like to do a site visit on any venue that has an occupancy of a certain level to make sure that there's no changes.
Okay.
It's no different than, there are very many scheduled plans in other places. We still do an inspection before, just in case the stage hasn't moved, chairs haven't been placed. So, it's just to ensure the safety on that day.
I appreciate that. And then maybe it's something we can convey to anyone in the town that has these events to, you know, understand that. So, thank you.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion. Go ahead. Vice Chair, go ahead. Make a motion to approve the one day dancing and entertainment license for Our Lady of Mount Carmel for the event date of April eighth, seven to ten, with the condition that the fire site visit is satisfactory.
Oh, St. Elizabeth, sorry.
St. Elizabeth.
On March twelfth.
That's what happens when you're trying to use the computer, trying to go paperless.
Vice Chair, with all the recommendations about the, the fire marshal and the, and the police chief?
Exactly.
Excellent.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, good luck. Have fun.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is item F one. This is the petition of Peter Hewitt, request council consideration for, for adoption of a resolution in opposition to the Governor Ramondo's roadworks plan to fund state infrastructure repairs by issuing bonds, erecting toll gantries, and tolling trucks. This also includes, from the consent agenda, items G G one through G G five.
Well, I think that this is an interesting resolution and well-drawn, and I tend to agree with it. However, I think the news is that this is pretty much a fait accompli. But I would like to comment on it. You know, one of the problems with laws, whether they're federal or state or ordinances in a town, it's very easy and transparent to look at the basic issue. There's so much truck traffic, proposed charge is a certain amount, you calculate it's going to bring in forty-five million. But beneath that most obvious calculation, there are other factors. Maybe these trucks won't come here anymore. Maybe they'll drive somewhere else. Although, it does cost as much or more in the adjacent states. Maybe there'll be an interference with the level of business in Rhode Island as a consequence of this. Suppose there are a few less jobs. There'll be less income tax. So, oftentimes, and this is certainly a case in point, the final net result is not quite the same as that first, obviously apparent, calculation would be. I think it's an anti-business provision. It's not unique because neighboring states have such a thing. But Governor Ramondo has made it a very sensible intention of her governorship that we do everything for the sake of business. And so, maybe this isn't necessary. The extent of the money required to fix all these bridges and elements is very large, and they're already talking about a three-hundred-million-dollar bond issue. So, I really think that this did require, perhaps still will require, a more in-depth consideration of the factors and the pros and cons. I'm not at all sure that the decisions being made upstate this week are correct.
Thank you. If you don't mind, in addition to the resolution I proposed for your consideration and adoption, I have also, in the past, before I left, I left for California on February first, so I missed the two hearings up at the State House by the House Finance and the Senate Finance Committees where they both voted out a compromise to Governor Ramondo's roadworks plan. There's still calls for borrowing, increasing the state's indebtedness, tolling. I think they're agreed to fourteen tolls spread throughout the state. Interestingly enough, interestingly enough, none for the Sycanet or the Newport Bridges, other than what already exists. Once burned, twice spotted, I guess. And tolling of certain commercial trucks, I think both in-state and out-of-state, because I think the concern was if they only provided for tolling for interstate traffic, there might be some litigation pending on the local truckers and local merchants saying, the out-of-state people saying, that's unfair. So, I did write a letter, too, before I left for California, to each member of the House Finance and each member of the Senate Finance, copies to Senator Mad, Republic, Representative Madiallo and Senator Piva Weed. I would like for your information, if nothing else, to distribute a copy to each of you before I continue. So, if you don't mind?
Sure. And one to the clerk, please.
Thanks, Pete.
Thanks, Peter. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
You may have also noticed that there have been two editorials printed by the Providence Journal. One a couple of weeks ago and one today. It's to my major disappointment, if not my disgust, that the editorial position of the Providence Journal speaks glowingly, initially of Governor Ramondo's plan of borrowing six hundred million dollars at the cost to the taxpayers of one-point-three billion dollars to pay it back. In addition, in the editorial, they mentioned that, given the fact that there is no other pragmatic alternative to the bonding, gantries, tolling plan as agreed to by Mr. Madiallo, Ms. Piva Weed, and the governor, I think that's, to say it as gently as I can and accurate, I think it's totally untrue. For those who serve in the General Assembly, and I think you'll find in my letter, and I, there have been, there is an alternative plan that's been proposed that wouldn't cost the taxpayers anything. There would be no bond, bond borrowing. There'd be no increase in the state's indebtedness. There would be no gantries put up at the cost of how many million? Thirty to forty million dollars at fourteen locations throughout the state of Rhode Island, which is not the biggest state. And I do think the truckers, before they are forced to pay a twenty to forty dollar per day toll, Rhode Island's a very easy state to get around. If you don't want to, if you, if you go into Massachusetts and New Hampshire or Maine, you can simply go up three-eighty-five, up through Connecticut to Mass Pike, and then, and you don't, you can ignore Rhode Island. So, the Mike Stenhouse Center for Freedom and Prosperity has proposed a, what he calls a P three, pay-as-you-go plan. He's indicated that there is a similar situation and plan adopted by Pennsylvania. That plan, coupled with Representative Patricia Morgan, who is a member of the House Finance Committee, she has indicated, and with, I think, specificity, she's looked to the current eight-point-seven-billion-dollar budget we have in this state. And going through those allocations, she has carved out a total, I think, of eight-hundred-and-seventy-five million dollars that's, that could be reallocated over a ten-year period, or eighty-seven-point-five million dollars a year, which exceeds the amount of money that Governor Ramondo's plan initially forecasted would be, would be available for fixing bridges, of sixty million dollars a year. So, the Morgan Plan cites specific allocations within the state budget that could be reallocated for fixing bridges, which in my judgment is one of the highest priorities and one of the greatest responsibilities of the state, is infrastructure. And I think it exceeds or takes precedence over an awful lot of, lot of items in the state budget, which are, I don't want to say frivolous, but certainly of a lesser priority and a lesser important, less importance than infrastructure needs, particularly given everybody's agreement that our bridges and roads are in such a deplorable state that they're structurally unsafe. And we're talking about potential of a bridge collapse or something happening where somebody gets killed. So, this is serious stuff. And I think it deserves serious attention. I think the Stenhouse Plan, the Morgan Plan deserves serious consideration and due diligence and not a business-as-usual, putting it aside in favor of the Ramondo, Slant, Madiallo, Slant, Piva Weed, additional borrowing, notwithstanding GAVI bonds, vice-revenue bonds. I know some of the people who are opposed to this, the Stock Toll's group, everybody seems to focus on their concern being that you toll the trucks today, it's the cars tomorrow. That's not my only concern. My concern is there is no need to borrow. There is no need to put up gantries. There is no need to toll people and emphasize or accent or accentuate the anti-business atmosphere this state already suffers from. If you look at the, all of the critical criteria for determining an economic viability of the state, Rhode Island lies in the bottom forty to fifty in almost every category. And something needs to be done to change that. And I would submit to you that this plan of bonding, borrowing more money, establishing fourteen tolls, and, and you can't say there's no tax increase because, of course, there's going to be an increased cost to the taxpayers. One, we're paying the bonds. And two, whatever you charge the truckers for coming into the state, it's going to be reflected in the goods, the certain, the goods and products we're buying. So, I think that's a crock. I would simply, and it's, as to your point, Halsey, that it may be a done deal. It's Rhode Island. It's probably, as business usual, it's a done deal. But I think from the town of Bristol standpoint, you are elected representatives of the constituents of Bristol. I think it's incumbent upon you to make your own value judgment of whether or not this plan is something that you want the General Assembly to adopt as opposed to consideration, if there is another prac, pragmatic, practical, viable plan that is doable, that raises more money out of the existing budget without costing the taxpayers another dime, I think you owe it to the constituents of this, of this town to give due consideration to it and express your own opposition if, in fact, you believe what I'm representing to you bears, bears your consideration. I think the town of Bristol ought to go on record along with other towns of opposing any plan. any plan, either the governor's plan or any variation of it, that calls for bonding, tolling, instruction of gantries, when there's an alternative plan available that costs the taxpayers not a single dime. It just requires some guts, on behalf of the General Assembly members, to vote, oppose to this plan, and do something that the taxpayer is expecting to do, and that's do right by the taxpayers. Buck the leadership if you have to. To me, going this route, if the alternative is viable, is unconscionable, and I think any General Assembly person who votes in favor of the leadership, and I think leadership in this case, or legislative leaders might be an oxymoron, because I don't think we're being led properly. I think any General Assemblyman and any Town Council person for that matter that goes along with this plan constitutes a dereliction of duty. That's how serious I feel about it. As a matter of fact, I'm at the point now, I love this state, but this state is going nowhere fast, and it's because of this type of stuff that goes off the General Assembly and with the governor, that's going to cause us to go closer and closer and closer to that financial cliff. And I'm thinking seriously about if this deal goes through, if we start putting gantries up throughout the state of Rhode Island, it's time for me to leave the state. And I think a lot of other people are feeling the same way. And I hate to say that, because it's a beautiful state, I love living here, my kids don't want me to sell the house because they think it's their house, too. And every time they come across that Monhuor Bridge, they say, "Yeah, you can't beat this view anywhere in the country, even, even on the Pacific Coast Highway in California." But enough is enough. This is the type of stuff that is going to convince me that this state is no longer worth living in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Peter, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention, because I agree with you on the infrastructure of Rhode Island. It's deplorable, or worse than the state. I am always nervous when I'm driving under bridges and I see blocks of wood holding up the bridges, it's, and I go to my, I say to myself, "What happened? How did we get to this point, and how did the canyon just get, keep getting kicked down the road?" So I'm glad you brought this to our attention, because I don't know much about these plans, and I'd like to have some time to research them before I take a vote, Mr. Chairman. But I'd also like to just mention to you, we also need to know, and these plans need to have some sort of maintenance plan involved with these roads, because you see them patch, you see them redone, and then they get left, and then nobody comes back to maintain them. They get cracked and frost heaves, you know, and everything else. And we end up spending double the money to tear it up and repave it again. So, but I appreciate you bringing this subject, I just wanted to, I just wanted to mention that.
In all fairness, I might add, I've spoken briefly to Ray Galison. He's my representative, and we've had a string of emails going back and forth. And he did indicate to me that of the Morgan Plan, and this was going, leaving church on Sunday, so it was kind of a brief conversation, we didn't want to mix, you know, religion with the General Assembly. But he did indicate that the Morgan Plan, he thinks there's some double counting in that. So his, his comment to me indicated that as far as he's concerned, the Morgan Plan, when she came up $875 million over 10 years, there was some double accounting. I can't speak to the accuracy of that. I reviewed the particulars of where she's suggesting we get the money and how we get it and from what different, what different elements or line items of the budget. I would be happy, you can either go on stocktolls.com and find it yourself, or I'd be happy to email each of you kind of the, the shot list of what, what those items are for you to evaluate as part of your due diligence and consideration. I'd be happy to send it to you.
Thank you.
I think we'd like to receive that.
I think one of the concerns that I have is, is there are several different plans out there. I mean, I'm not in favor of the tolls at all. I think that that is, you know, probably, you know, is bad for business, and who knows if other classes of trucks will ultimately end up in that, in the tolls. But I don't, I don't, I wouldn't feel that I could support the pay, just the complete pay-as-you-go plan without knowing where those items are, what items are going to be cut. The truckers have talked about raising the diesel tax, which is an option. I don't know how you can get out of this without borrowing some money for a vast project like this. So I think it's a little unfair for people to say, "You have to go with the pay-as-you-go plan." I understand why people would say that, because you can take the money out of something else. And I think Patricia Morgan has said it's one, you know, it's 1% out of the budget, whatever. But I think without knowing, I mean, how does that impact education? How does that impact elderly? How does that impact all the other services? It's hard to, it's hard to say, "Yeah, that's the best plan." You know, do I think they could do it without the gantries? Probably could, you know? Definitely could, because truckers are coming forward and willing to pay tax in another way. But this, or this resolution that you've suggested, along with the, most of the others here, and there's only about five of them that we have received, speaks specifically to pay-as-you-go. So I think I agree with Tim in that part. We have to really go through that in detail and see what they're looking to do, because when you're talking about the, the cost to taxpayers, if more of the burden ends up, you know, I don't think school, school aid is one of, let's just say hypothetically, and that, more of that falls on us, then our taxpayers don't win either way. And I think that's, you know, that's where sometimes, I know she's done a lot of work on this, but I'm, I'm just a little concerned to just say, "Yeah, we're going to go with this plan instead of that plan." And I think that the comment you said that Town Council people would be derelict if they don't support this, I think is an unfair comment. And one of the reasons that I don't like the resolutions that float around from town to town is because we're focused on, and this impacts, you know, this is a huge issue, and you can't go anywhere in Rhode Island without hearing about this issue, or possibly having a conversation about it. But in general, you know, the legislators have sat through, I'm not saying I agree with them, I want to make that clear, but they've sat through the hearings where they get to ask the questions, they get to hear the information firsthand, they can have a dialogue back and forth with, with what they're hearing and respond back. We don't have that ability to do that. And so it's, I think that it becomes a little unfair to us that we, we're going on what we've read in the paper, what we hear on talk radio, what we've, like, had the time to research, but we also have our own issues locally and our jobs and everything else. So it's not, I don't think it's quite fair to say that if we don't go on record of a resolution, and as you know, they're voting on this right now in the House. I mean, when I left, not when I left, but they're probably just going to come back when I left. They, they'd taken a dinner break at, like, around 6:20. Probably, it could be done by now in the House, and, and we already know where the Senate stands. So I think, I don't, I just don't think that's a fair comment. That's my point to you, is like, to say, we're derelict in our duties because we don't do this resolution. A council meeting happens to be taking place, I mean, it's uncommon that any major legislation happens before the last night, as you know, in Rhode Island, and this is going on in February. So I mean, we can take a look further, but I, I would want to know every detail of where the pay-as-you-go plan cuts money, and then if it was bonded, you know, all those details, because I don't want to just support one plan, I, because I don't know what is the best plan. I know, I believe tolls aren't the right plan, but I don't know what is the better plan.
My comment about the dereliction, I think, was predicated upon the fact of the belief that you, me, anybody within a position of responsibility, a position of leadership representing constituencies, would be derelict to support the Raimondo and/or Piverweed gantry plan, tolling plan, bonding plan, if, or while, there is a very practical, pragmatic alternative that would allow for the same, if not more money, to cover the fixing of the, you know, but due diligence.
But we haven't commented on, we're not, we haven't commented in support of the plan.
Well, what I'm suggesting to you is, I'll be happy to send you what I know of Morgan's plan. Now, whether or not that constitutes due diligence or due consideration, all I'm suggesting is that anybody who's in a position of determining how the, how the bridges are to be properly funded, if they vote in favor of a tolling operation without due consideration of any other practical viable plans, whether it's the truckers' increase in diesels, now, if you, if you consider all, and then you make your value judgment that the tolling plan's the best way to go, then you can do so certainly, and then explain to your constituents why you did. So that's, that's the, that's the context in which I'm suggesting there may be a dereliction on the part of an elected representative who goes along with the tolling plan while there is a viable alternative.
My only point to you is that may be true, but I believe that's a legislative issue. I don't think that that could be put on the Town Council, because we're not voting on it, nor do we have the people in front of us to ask the questions and to have all the detail. I mean, if there's hours and hours and hours of hearing in the, in the Finance Committees at the Legislature, we don't have that same opportunity. So we can read through those plans and try to make the best determination, but ultimately, all we can say to, all we're going to do is the same thing that individually we may have already done or not done, our constituents do, is give a, give an opinion to legislators. I just want to make that, to me, there's a distinction between that, because we don't have an ultimate say on whether this happens or we, it doesn't. That's all I'm saying.
No, you don't have an ultimate say, but again--
You're implying that we do.
But you do represent the people of Bristol. And whatever the General Assembly is going to do today, tomorrow, or what have you, is going to have an impact on the people of Bristol. And as an elected representative of the people of Bristol, you certainly have an obligation and a duty and a responsibility to, to take a position that reflects what you believe to be in the best interests of your constituents. And if that best position is, or if you make a judgment that the, the best interest of the people of Bristol is to oppose this, that's what I'm suggesting in the resolution. And it's up to you to determine what you need to know to come to that conclusion. I'm just suggesting where I'm coming from, and I'm also, I'd be happy to provide you with whatever I know Representative Morgan has come up with, and you can make a value judgment in terms of whether or not that doesn't impact education, as far as I can see.
If I may--
I just use that as a hypothetical, by the way.
If I may, Mr. Uwitt, speaking of Representative Morgan, I agree with my Councilwoman, Perella, due diligence, and I know you're all about due diligence. And when, you know, she's specifying that that plan, the Morgan Plan or the Stenhouse, all the other factors that are involved of, you know, those in and outs, that I was going to ask my colleagues, because that's the one part of your resolution that I highlighted, was whereas a practical and viable alternative plan. So I was going to ask my colleagues, because I do have family and I give 110% to the town when I do, I watch the House and Senate Finance meetings on Capitol TV, so I have been following it.
You're good.
So with that said, you know, I think due diligence, Representative Morgan asked her for herself yesterday for documentation, and she feels the same way about due diligence. And she asked for documentation that she didn't have. So she feels the same way as we do.
She was asked for information?
She wanted certain, specific information. So I'm just making a comparison of how we sit here, and my colleagues want to do their due diligence, is the same way as Representative Morgan, which I agree with. And this council was on the record, you mentioned Secana, we passed a resolution through this council for tolls and assedments on how, you know, I agree with the economic impact that you're stating. Bonding, we just talked about this last week at our Capital Projects Commission, because here in our town, our road infrastructure is just like everyone else, you know, with our drainage problems. But caution to the wind, this council has budget coming up, and, you know, we're going to put a referendum out this election, and we're crafting it now. While we're crafting it, we agree with you, we can't put the burden on residents, we've got to be realistic on how much we can bond for, because we don't want to burden the residents and keep practical solutions in the back, back of our minds of how we cut our budget and whatnot. So there's a lot of agreement, I think, amongst our colleagues in what you set forth here. I think in comparison with the other five towns, you know, this was set forth by Governor Raimondo back in May, and obviously it's happening all at once, and even tonight, on the House floor, how it works is, there might be changes that we don't know are existing right now, with riders or amendments, that other representatives are going to agree to. So even the Raimondo plan might get changed tonight without us knowing. But with that said, I do agree with you coming forward and giving this work that you put into this, but I would probably, you know, there's a couple of things of, you know, specifying not to raise any taxes. I think there might be solutions, there was talk about gas tax. So I think what my colleagues are saying, we don't want to bind ourselves, not that we're disagreeing with you, because there are things in here that I agree with you, and I'll be on the record for saying that, it's just common sense. But I would probably refer it, at the end of the day, to the solicitor, to craft something, any resolution, and I know we're on the record for saying this in the past, with any resolutions or letters, that we would refer it to our solicitor. So as far as being on the record, and you know that any conversation we have, it is common sense and whatnot, and this council has been outspoken, but due diligence and, you know, as is, I think there would be changes, but I did state how I feel on the ones I agree with, and I'm anticipating what other changes in that dialogue, because I believe in that, because to put the burden of a bond going forward for our grandchildren and to address the needs of infrastructure, which we agree on, there should be alternative ways, so.
So I heard a motion to refer this to the solicitor, that's what I heard.
Second.
Okay. So the discussion part is, I know that we've all weighed in, and I've heard things like fait accompli from Counselor Harrisoff and talking about where this, where this vote is. Certainly, I wouldn't sign anything just on the mere fact of just having legal look at it before, so, and it, it looks really good, it really does, I got to, I got to be honest, but certainly, that's why we pay the solicitor to review it. But I've done what you've suggested, and, and I think we all have, in varying degrees and varying ways, I've reached out to our reps and asked, "What is going on?" Councilman Stewart just mentioned a good point, which is, there's a multitude of riders that were suggested and approved by House Finance, including oversight to DOT, and there's a lot of things that are connected with this, and you're suggesting just that. So I, my takeaway on this one is, you're saying, "Let's make sure that we stay focused on this and not just watch what happens, but get involved with our reps," and I think we're doing that. So we have a motion and a second to refer this to the solicitor. Is there any other discussion before we take that?
Well, I might just add one thing to that. I agree with you, Pete, and with Eddie, that it's appropriate for any Town Council to think about any issue that may affect their own citizens that they represent, and therefore, I think this qualifies as an element for us to consider. We don't have any authority over it, but we certainly have a little bully pulpit over it. So I think, to be realistic, these bridges and roads are going to be worked on in the next years, decades, to fix them up, and that's probably wise, that it should happen. But I agree with you that of the many different ways in which it can be paid for, it's, it's not at all sure that the particular method being talked about and perhaps accepted is not necessarily the right one. I'm very interested in this Morgan approach. It's an approach that could be used in any government, anywhere, whether it's the federal government, or the state government, or the town government, that we can perhaps rearrange our monies and sadly take away from some things that we've become to, to think are standardized, but take the money and put it into something new that's even higher priority. So I'd like to learn more about the Morgan approach, but I think it's, I'm in favor of this motion, that we take a position, we just have to be careful in making sure that it's the appropriate position and it's couched in a term that sets forth our philosophy without necessarily decreeing a detail that we might later not like to be behind.
Perfect. I would just say, the essence of, of the resolution is, if I can say it in a couple of sentences, is for the town of Bristol to take a position, an opposition of the Raimondo Truck Toll Plan, or any variation, any legislation variation of it, that calls for bonding, borrowing, tolling, gantries, et cetera, or increase in any taxes, permits, fees, while there is, or may be, a viable, pragmatic alternative that doesn't require such, and imposes no further burden on the taxpayers by simply prioritizing and reallocating existing revenues for that primary, that, that higher priority purpose. That's the essence of the resolution.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to refer to the solicitor, all in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, and as the Town Council's, item F2, this is the petition of Patrick T. and Gail C. Conley, 1 Bristol Point Road, request council consideration for the installation of a street light on Monkey Wrench Lane.
Well, Mr. Chairman, some weeks ago, the Town Administrator and I made a little trip down there to look at that area in the dark of night. It wasn't such a dark night, but it was after sunset. And we looked at the possibility of a street light close to the Sisters of St. Dorothy, or possibly down in that very dark corner, which is referred to in this-- to in this petition from Dr. Conley. In looking at it again, Tony, since our visit, I'm more or less in the opinion that since the Sisters entry has some lights already, that they seem to illuminate every night, I think it would be better to put an additional light, not there, but down at the street corner. The advantage of that is that it would shine on a dangerous corner at the foot of a hill. It would direct some light beams westward along the westbound part of Monkey Wrench Lane, as well as up the hill as far as the Sisters of St. Dorothy and beyond. So, I'm in favor of this request. And if we're going to put one street light down there, I think we should put it in that corner.
I have no opposition to this, except to the fact that we're going to spend that time and replace all of our streetlights. It seems like it would cost a lot more to buy one or two, and you'd certainly correct me if I'm wrong here, to buy one or two versus buying all of them at the same time whenever we, obviously, we're in the process of getting that done. Again, I don't have any, if there's a street light that's necessary down here, so be it. No problem. It just seems like it would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, is it more expensive to do one at a time here? Or is there value in waiting and doing all of them at the same time?
Well, at the present time, we have already the full inventory and a price from National Grid. So, we can't actually not add any, we cannot add any additional lights at this point until we finalize the purchase price and we move forward and get a maintenance contractor on board to install any future requests.
So, we can't at this point?
We cannot.
Okay. But we, but certainly, and I'm going to say one more time, opposition. If there's a light necessary, it's appropriate.
Correct.
So, but we need to wait until that. And give us, so we can all talk about this and be clear on it, when will that happen?
Well, right now, we have the solicitor visiting the documents, the purchase documents that we received, the package from National Grid. So, we finalize in that piece, and that should take place, I would say, within the next couple of weeks. We should be able to post some numbers, because ultimately, we have to come back to you at the next meeting, you know, and let you know exactly if there's any details that you need to be aware of regarding the purchase.
So, let's do this. Why don't we make that as our next meeting, which will be in three weeks approximately, correct? Four weeks?
This is the one we moved, remember?
That's right. So, our next meeting is in four weeks. That's more than enough time to be able to speak to the cost involved in that, plus maybe speak to this particular issue. Is that?
I'd just like to add to that. I think one element that you're undertaking, I just learned about this week, which I am very much in favor of, is to ask the police department to check on all the lights and see whether the billing matches the lights. I'm pretty sure, as an example, there's a situation on Burnside Street, where my office is, where a pole fell over and a previous light was not put back. And I would be very interested if we found out they've been billing us and we've been paying for that light for the last five years when it wasn't even there. And I think that it's very important that the police department make this check, because what I'm suggesting is just one example of what may be, you know, might be we'll find 20 lights that they've charged for and not provided.
Valid point.
That is true.
Lou, can you help us with a motion here? Is that, I don't think we need to continue this, but I think this should be part of the conversation, clear part of the conversation as when we speak about the purchase price, such and so forth. Now, we can just continue this item till the next meeting, if that's the most appropriate way?
But I do think that we're getting back to this particular request.
Yeah, because that way, it might get lost in the shuffle. So, is there a motion to continue this to our, oh, certainly. Of course. Come on up. If you could state your name for the record.
My name is Sarah Pardee, and I live at 18 Monkey Wrench Lane.
Okay. Would you want to please pull the microphone down closer to you?
Sorry, I'm very short.
Welcome.
I just learned about this streetlight issue maybe two hours ago, three hours ago. The pole that they're thinking about, that you seem to be referencing, is right in front of my house. If you put a light on that pole, it will, in fact, shine in my kitchen, in my bedroom, on my deck. And for me, it would really disrupt the ambiance that makes Monkey Wrench Lane so lovely, which is, it's a quiet country road. It's dark. You can see the stars. And you'd be lighting up my driveway, my father's driveway, and Mr. Conley's driveway. I don't see the value to the town for spending that kind of money. I don't know how much a light costs, but I think it's very, very expensive. Bristol actually spent a great deal of money fixing Monkey Wrench Lane two years ago, and they solved a problem that's existed since I was a little kid. It's beautiful. Part of the fix, in fact, was to keep the culvert clean underneath a section of Monkey Wrench Lane, which I assume costs money. It hasn't been done since you fixed the road. So, from my perspective, as a taxpayer, I would much rather see our money go to maintain this incredible fix that you've finally done than to put a big, huge light that shines all over my house and ruins my ambiance, which is what I pay my taxes for.
Well, this council appreciates you sharing that information with us, because it's nice to hear, we'll call it a different view on it. So, what we can do is, we'll make sure that the, as we take this next step, that maybe you could reach out to the administrator and share that view. So, because this is a petition in front of us for us to consider. Certainly, at our next meeting, that'll be part of that discussion. And if there's anybody else that is for or against, is your neighbor, certainly, we'd like to know that too.
The other person who would be directly impacted would be Nancy Brigard, who owns the piece of property right across from that. And it would literally light up her entire front lawn.
Okay. Well, this is good information.
So, I think, I just think it has a huge impact on the two people whose houses are right there at the pole.
Thank you for sharing that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just had a quick question.
Certainly.
Tony, I just had a quick question for you. Under the new LED conversion, and we were doing the whole rise audit, we're going to be reviewing all the streetlights that are out there right now to kind of find out what we're getting billed for, correct? So, we're already in kind of in the process of doing that?
Right now, actually, I asked Chief if he would have the third shift police officers do that. And he has, he has just told me that the process is pretty much completed. He will have a report sometime by this Friday to me. So, they actually work pretty quick, because let me tell you, you're talking about 2,049 lights that we have out there currently. Well, allegedly, we have that according to the inventory. We certainly will have those verified through the assistance of the police department, which is very much appreciated and quite a savings to the town. It would have cost, if we were to have a company do that, it would have cost us $5,000.
So, and to that end, we have 2,049 lights. Do we need 2,049 lights? Maybe we need every single one, and that's okay. And maybe we only need 1,500. So, maybe, this will certainly be part of that dialogue. But did we get a motion, I'm sorry, did we have a motion to continue to our next meeting?
It kind of got lost in the.
All right. So, we got a motion to continue this to our next meeting. We have a second to do that. Is there any other discussion?
Well, I'd just like to say that I think, once the police department's count is in hand, the council would like to see as best estimate as possible of the money saving of the proposed purchase and change of lights. I know that you probably can't exactly figure out what we're going to save, but the best estimate would be of interest to us before the final decision.
Agreed.
We'll have that number for you at the next meeting.
So, there's a motion and a second to continue. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is petition of Reverend Henry P. Zino Jr., pastor of Lady Mount Carmel Church, 141 State Street. Request council consideration for the annual use of the town common this year from July 10th through 17th, 2016. You have a recommendation provided from the police department, which says that they have, find no reason to deny the request.
We approve as long as all ordinances and rules of the town are obeyed.
Lou, can I just clarify one point? It's asking for the 10th through the 17th is the feast, but then the assembly of the booths and so forth and dismantling of them, it has a date of the 18th. So, should we just be, say the 10th through the 18th to be safe?
Well, is that what's on the petition? Did we just, I mean, you know, there's so many.
Well, there's multiple dates on here. So, the actual feast itself is on the 17th.
I would like the 10th through the 18th.
I think there'd be.
The 10th through the 18th, I think should be the motion.
Good catch, Lou.
So, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
So, discussion, we, this council had, and let me just say that I'm absolutely in favor of going forward with this, and I think we should. But for clarity point, this council spoke about a moratorium about public use with liquor license, and I'm assuming there was, that liquor is part of the goal here, or has been in the past. Beer and wine is served there. So, it would be my suggestion that we do approve this, but have it subject to any, the discussion and the final policy that we come up with for liquor use on public land. For example, we have minimum requirements for liability limits. We had recent discussion about the harbor event that included having to have a, I'm sorry, a caterer's license for liquor, such and so forth. So, I think that this should be subject to those things. And it probably won't change anything that they already do. But I think it's appropriate that that be included. And again, I'm absolutely for this.
I think you.
No, I just believe that the ongoing thing, Mr. Chairman, and with the trust, with the tulip policy, that we have to have an ongoing discussion with the solicitor that he's well aware of and the administration, that we might want to expedite that. I know we're going to have the next couple of months. But I think we have to expedite this policy once and for all, because the summer's going to be here, and there's going to be more requests. And I think this is something we have to address, and it's very crucial.
Well, the one thing I don't want to see happen is, like, you know, I mean, I was very vocal about those issues. And my concern is town-sponsored events on our town common, on our town parks, town-sponsored. I don't think it's a good, I don't think it was good for us to be, like, allowing that or to have certain groups. Now, I don't know that they have a caterer's license. I don't know if anybody has a caterer's license over there. Just like, I'm not sure that.
Just for a point of clarity on that, you don't necessarily need one. There is an option for that. And that's why they actually spoke up with a tulip policy, not a flower. It's about a secondary policy to, for protecting the town for liability.
Right. And I think that they, I think they've already got, like, their copies to their insurance company. I mean, I think as long as they're covered and they indemnify us, whatever, if it's the correct language. I mean, I also see this as a different event. And there's lots of police officers there. I see them. I work at that feast. I see there's a different event than having, you know, thousands of people at Colt State Park and on our town beach property running around drinking all day long. And that's how this came up. So, I think we have to be careful, whoever's working on that policy, to make that differentiation.
Well, we would, this council would make that final call.
No, I know, but somebody's writing a draft of it. So, I don't know if it's like a small subcommittee or if it's legal counsel, but.
You got it. I think that that's very much appropriate. So, does anybody have any objection to that disclaimer on that?
No, Mr. Chairman, I think it's a good thing you're bringing up. And I think it's important we have a process that we follow, so there's not this ambiguity in regards to what we do, what we don't do, in regards to the Harbor Festival, to the Mount Carmel Festival. I want to make sure we have a process to follow. I think Councilman Stewart has talked about it many times. I think it's a way to make sure we're following, we're treating everybody evenly, and we're being fair, and we're making sure we're covering ourselves and making sure people are tip certified, the insurance is there, and whatever they need to be is secure for us. So, we can, everybody can have a good time safely.
So, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, there's a lot going on there, so I want to make sure I have this clear in the notes. Because we saw that jumped off. Okay, got it. The next item is the petition of Ronald Walpole, 30 Bayview Avenue. Request council consideration for an accessible parking space in front of his residence. You have a recommendation provided by the police department, and they recommend that be granted. Okay. This, of course, would be the first reading. And there's also a recommendation from the town administrator and the Director of Public Works.
My request on this is, this is a request for a disability permit, but the gentleman makes no reference to that in his request. He simply says, "due to a lack of parking at this location." So, I don't think it's justified unless there is a disability. And I don't want to.
No, I believe the gentleman, I think the gentleman did provide a copy of the permit.
Yes.
Yeah, he did.
He's looking at this letter?
Handicap parking in front of my house.
That's right here.
Well, yeah, but that's a disability. Is that his permit?
Yes.
Yes.
So, he's asking for a disability parking space. I think the H-word is now not politically correct. So, we say disability accommodation or something.
So, what's this council's plan?
Constitute that this is a first reading, right, Lou?
Yes, this would be a first reading.
This is the disability parking permit.
Right.
Make a motion to approve.
So, there's a motion and a second?
I made a motion to constitute that this is a first reading. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Is that the policy?
That is correct. And there is a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. Similarly, you have a request of a constituent to remove one of these accessible parking spaces, which is no longer needed. And there's similar recommendation provided in this scraping pile here.
It's pretty amazing that they informed us so promptly. And I think we're grateful for the fact that where such a condition exists and no longer is needed, that we're told about it, because sometimes these go on for years after they expire.
Sure do. Certainly, our condolences go out to the Kieran family, including Tanya, who is actually making this request. Tanya is our chairman of the Christmas Festival Committee.
Absolutely.
Yeah, very sorry.
I think it'd be good if the court would express our appreciation for their thoughtfulness.
So, Lou, this is a first reading.
First reading, yes.
Is there a motion of that effect?
Still moved.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have the public service appointment section. You had, you did have a request of James Viera to be considered for Assistant Hovermaster, but we understand that Mr. Viera has withdrawn this request.
Okay.
You also have from Thomas Breslin, his desire not to seek reappointment as the CRMC alternate member. Just sort of FYI, Mr. Breslin did indicate that he's held this position for, I think, about a decade and has actually been, never has been called to serve. This is.
We still appreciate what he does.
We do. And I'm sure it was, it may have been frustrating to Dr. Breslin. The, my understanding of this is that the person serves only if there is a, one of the members is absent and the matter being discussed is specific to Bristol. Okay? So, it would have to be sort of like a perfect storm that would occur for that to happen. Notwithstanding, the CRMC is still asking us, please send us the name of an alternate, because they need one.
So, if you're in the public and you're willing to do absolutely nothing, put your name in, we'd be more than happy to talk to you. I'm joking. Dr. Breslin has been a wonderful contributor to the community, so.
Well, Lou, we get every few weeks a CRMC request for a new peer or some change to Bristol. I can't imagine that in 10 years, there wouldn't be an instance of both the Bristol matter and an absence of somebody there. So, I really believe that either Dr. Breslin or the new appointee should contact CRMC and say, what's going on? Why don't you?
Well, I think he was pretty aggressive about it, actually, because I think he was championing at the bit to be able to go there and give his two cents. And it just wasn't happening. So, you know, we can certainly, once the council decides on a new individual, we can give them the right names and phone numbers, and maybe they might have a little more luck.
Well, the least the CRMC could do is to invite him to a meeting and introduce him to all the members.
I suppose.
Lou, is this, if this doesn't, does it have to be a member of the public, or could it be assigned to one of our staff people, like our Hovermaster, and free up an interested public member for many of the other, one of the other many boards and commissions that we have that?
That I don't know. I'm not, to tell you the truth, I'm not really sure. I would imagine it would have to be someone that would qualify to be a member of the CRMC. So, whether or not.
Could you check that out? It just seems to me, because if we have the Hovermaster, the Assistant Hovermaster, there's all these, you know, there's all these, you know, people who work, Diane, I mean, all these people that are here that...
Yeah, I mean, part of the problem with doing that is that those people usually end up testifying if there's something controversial.
Oh, that's true, too, yeah.
So you don't necessarily want to put them in that, that kind of a situation where they would be the voting member who also has to provide the expert testimony.
Why don't we look into it?
Yeah, we can, we can look at it. I mean, obviously, there hasn't been great urgency in 10 years. Hopefully, there won't be any of the...
Well, if there was, then we could always rethink it.
You have time.
So I would imagine the council wants to, again, advertise this vacancy.
So what's the council's pleasure?
I would say we'd like to advertise for it.
I'd like to just know the answer to if this could be assigned to someone, since it doesn't really happen.
I'll second that motion. Also, Lou, like the chairman said, thank Dr. Breslin for his willingness to go to the meetings.
Excellent, yeah. Letter, thanks, be great.
Perfect. So there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
So we're gonna do both?
I will do both.
Yes, please.
The next item is from the treasurer regarding report on the Maritime Center capital project continued from January 27.
And this will be continued again because the treasurer's not here this evening. I did speak with her a little bit about it, and if you recall, we all, we had a special meeting in regards to additional funds for the harbor, excuse me, the Maritime Center going back a few months. And I want to get some clarity out there. I know we all do, specifically Halsey and I went down and took a look at the Maritime Center, but I know this whole council wants to make sure that everyone knows that we're watching this, and there were some expectations that maybe some of them weren't necessarily met, but that is still up for discussion, so we'll wait for Julie to come back at our next meeting in four weeks. So can I have a motion to continue?
Mr. Chairman, I agree, continue the next meeting, but I'd like to leave with Diane, the point that this report suggests that it's over budget with a million seven fifty-seven. So I think when we do consider it at a next meeting, we ought to see if there's a way to not go over budget, because there's a lot of resistance in this town for us spending even the $800,000 that we've authorized, and I'm very sorry if we see this going over budget for another hundred thousand or so. Now, you did get an extra small grant, didn't you, towards this?
Before you comment on that, we have a motion on the floor. Can I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, so go ahead with that discussion.
So maybe just if you would, just form the council on that one question.
So that was a small grant to raise the utilities up to the second floor. That was a FEMA grant that we got.
But is that part of the million seven fifty-seven that is now anticipated to spend?
You know, I don't have it in front of me, and I don't want to comment. I'd like to really...
Fair enough, and I think that's the reason to continue it, but you might mention to Julie that I raised that question.
I will.
Please.
Thank you. Thank you. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, and as the town council, is a report provided by Stephen Bridgity regarding industry trends of hospitality.
I want to thank Mr. Bridgity for following this to us and keeping us up to date with the figures and the trends that are on a positive side throughout the East Bay and Bristol County. So I make a motion, we receive and file.
Second.
There's a motion, receive and file. Any discussion?
I'd just like to comment, if I might, Mr. Chairman.
It could be discussion.
I think it's a terrible presentation. For example, this second figure has definition of three categories, and they only show two in the graph. Secondly, in this particular illustration, instead of making the graphs of different heights to indicate the difference in it, they make them all the same height. So I think it's a lousy presentation and should be done better.
Well, I think it's, I don't know if they sent it to us in color, but something like this would be beneficial if it could get to us in color.
We usually, we usually do that. We had, we did have, we had a little bit of a glitch on the copying this time around.
Yeah.
And that, actually, Mr. Harrisop, we'll be happy to provide you with a color copy because I think it's a little bit, it's easier to see the illustration in the color copy.
Yeah, because you can't make out the difference because, you know, they didn't hash, like, hash mark anything, they just kind of...
Yeah.
It's more of the amounts than the colors, remember?
Well, it is, but I mean, you're just kind of looking through. But in this one here, I think the one that Halsey's looking at is the October Bed Talks combined five-year analysis, which is Bristol County one color, Newport County excluding Newport is another color, and the city of Newport is another. And the Bristol County and Newport County are almost the same color in the black, in the black and white version. So that's the one I think that's difficult.
Yeah, so we'll be happy to provide a color copy.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is from, this was, this was something that came up during a special meeting that we had last week, and the council directed me to ask the community development department for a, just sort of a timeline update on the community development block grant.
Hello, Diane.
Hello. I would be happy to give you an update. I don't think I can give you a timeline because it is out of my hands at the moment.
Whose hands is it in?
My understanding is it is in the governor's hands right now. My understanding from statewide planning is that the state committee made a recommendation for the grant award that was sent to the governor in December, and they were hoping to have the governor's sign off in early January, and we're now into middle of February. So I called again today to find out if there was any news, and there's no new news. So we're all still waiting. I was told that if we have a project that's considered an emergency, that we can email them and they can maybe shake some of the money loose. So I did actually email on behalf of the Bristol Housing Authority today to see if we can shake their money loose. But other than that, I'm sorry, I don't have anything more definite.
So every year, there isn't a timeline? I mean, at the discretion of the governor's office of, they decide at when we're too busy or whatever. I would think that municipalities depend on it. I just find it hard, I'm not blaming you, Diane, I just think it's inexcusable that, well, we'll get back to it. It sounds like other agencies, you know, that have a timeline and say, "Yeah, we'll get back to you when..."
So maybe when the truck tolls pass, she'll be...
Check on Friday, yeah, check Friday. Check after tomorrow.
I feel like we're mixing agenda items on that one, so...
I will say that this is sort of business as usual with the CDBG grant. It feels like this happens every year.
Oh, it does.
My understanding last year was that they had a new policy that if it, if it is on the governor's desk for whatever period of time, and there's no action, that it just, the letters get sent out without the governor's signature. So I asked about that, what I thought was the new policy, and they said they really hadn't heard anything about that this year.
Turns out, it's on the lieutenant governor.
We're still waiting, and I'm, you know, we're all frustrated. We'll just keep waiting.
I just think that it should be a standard policy and timeline every year of, because they depend on the submission and timelines of when you have to submit it, and then not to have a timeline of...
And I'm making, I'm making light of it, but I agree 100%. There's a lot of things that, there's a lot of organizations, and some of them local, that depend on this in a timely fashion.
They do, and we, you know, we are conveying the information that we are being told, and then we are sort of getting in the middle of it in a way because we can't fulfill our, what we're telling folks is going to be the timeline based on what the state is telling us. They did have the, the deadline was September this year. We were supposed to know, it was supposed to be a very quick turnaround, you know, part of the economic development stimulus, getting the money out to the different subrecipients, but nothing yet.
It was five months.
Yeah.
Right, right. And there's still a process that we have to undertake once we find out about the award to do the environmental and get the release of funds, so...
Do you know how much is being held up?
I don't know, that's the question. We don't know what our award is.
Because we don't know what the award is, we don't know what it is.
Nothing.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
I'll keep you posted as soon as I hear.
Thank you.
So we need a motion to receive and file.
Second.
There's a motion to receive and file and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the RFPMPA number three. This is for professional architectural services for a feasibility study for the Wally School. There were three submissions. The first was from the Brewster Thornton Group of Architects with a proposal amount of $14,000. The second was from Derky Brown, Viveris, and Warren Fell's Architects of Providence, the amount $20,425, and the third from GMI Architects of Bristol, and the amount of $19,000.
Now, this is a case, is it not, Tony, where you're not obligated to take the low bidder because it's a professional operation?
That is very correct. In fact, what will, what will happen is that Diane, Richard Pimenta, will be taking a look at all three of them and do a comparison chart with all of them, and make sure they are comparing that we get the best deal regardless of who we may pick.
Most important, we get a good job.
Correct.
Yeah.
So is there a motion?
I've moved that this be conveyed to the town administrator to act in the best interests of the town.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, just a piece of discussion here. This is architectural services for Wally School. Just to remind everybody, this is to take a look at what we need to do to bring it up to, we'll call it habitable, and then above and beyond that, and make sure that the money that we spend, if we spend any money there right now, is that it's appropriate for now and down the road. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And the periodic report coming forth from, this time from William Goslin, the Warren Director of the Bristol County Water Authority.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a comment on the monthly report that Ken Booth and Director Marchand had discussions with East Providence City Manager Richie Kirby, and this has been ongoing discussions of tri-town councils, the chairman and myself, along with the meeting that we specified last meeting, of this discussion with BCWA and the discouraging part and comments from our colleagues in government of trying to have conversations with East Providence for a long period of time, and now all of a sudden, they're requesting additional information regarding the 16-inch pipe and the study forwarded by Par Corporation. And I tend to agree, and I think my colleagues would agree, I don't want to put words in their mouth, that that is a crucial discussion because that's the city we're going through, and I think we have to pay close to attention to those discussions and what's taking place with East Providence. So that's, I just wanted to comment on that.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question on that, and you may not be able to answer it?
Before you do, can I have a motion to receive and file?
Motion to receive and file.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, go ahead.
Has, has there been any progress with the East Providence people regarding having them join us in accessing the...
Well, this letter refers to a couple of meetings on that, but personally, I'm pretty disappointed that we have this endless progression of meetings and nothing happens.
So right now, there's nothing, there's nothing on the deck to access Potucket's water source?
He refers to the director saying they've had some meetings with the East Providence City Manager, and that they're interested in this, but they've been interested for seven or eight years, and we gotta, I think, push to get something to happen there.
I thought East Providence had objected because they didn't want to, they didn't want to allocate any money towards the project.
They had, exactly, that was their position. However, this last two paragraphs in here suggest there may be an opportunity to modify that back. But you know, this rate increase here, they passed 3.25% increase. Over the last few years, that adds up to 20.5% increase to our users, and I think it's very questionable whether they really needed so many increases. Inflation rates been low for the three years or so?
Well, I believe Pam Marchand indicated a couple of years ago that she intended there would be a 12% increase one year, followed by an indefinite annual 4% increase.
That adds up so far to 20.5%.
But I'm certainly hoping if there's any kind of an inkling or an opening with East Providence regarding they're willing to get on board with the idea of accessing Potucket as an alternate source, I hope Pam Marchand and the Bristol County Water are aggressively pursuing that opening.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think it might be time for us to, once again, have the council consider a strong statement of support for that point, and that we're impatient for action. Maybe that's an item we could put on the next agenda.
Agreed.
You wrote a letter?
Agreed.
Present it to us?
Yeah. So we'll add that to, to the motion to receive and file?
Aye.
Please.
Yes.
So amended, Mr. Chairman? Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next item is from the solicitor regarding revaluation legislation draft.
This is a very important thing that we get, to have a three-year interval from our last statistical upgrade, and I think it's great that this is going forward, hopefully.
Yeah, hopefully it does.
So just to remind everybody, we did a statistical revale, and then we did a statistical revale, and this is so we can push off what would normally be due now off three years because we are up to date with things, and it's very appropriate, and I believe we should have success with this. So is there a motion to, what do we need to adopt, to approve?
Well, I think you would, you would refer this to the solicitor to convey this along with a resolution to the legislature for the legislative actions.
So moved.
Second.
That's really good. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, and then the, there is no need for the executive session because there's nothing further to report, so the council can just pass that item, and then we come to the individual council member agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
We had some snow last couple of days, some wacky snow, took down some tree limbs. I know in front of our house on Sydney Street, I guess there was a tree that, or a branch that went down on Hope Street, and it caused the electricity to arc in front of our house, and the whole world turned blue and green for a little while, so it was, it was quite impressive, both the sound and, and the lights on that.
And it was not northern lights.
It was definitely not northern lights, no. So it's, it's, we've been, we've been fortunate, and also, we thank the DPW, we thank police, we thank, we thank fire department for being out and about and keeping all of us safe and dealing with those issues as they, as they present themselves. To that end, I went on our website looking for some information. Specifically, I was actually looking for the parking ban, and to be clear, I know that it was put in correctly, but if you go on our website, it was not clear. So if you were, if you didn't have the inside information, if you will, you couldn't see that we had a parking ban. So I'm going to say it one more time, it's like this and with, with other things like this, it wasn't a question of the person not doing their job, it was a question of the website showing the information correctly. So what I'm going to ask is that, to you, Tony, that we come up with a game plan moving forward for this and a refresh of the maintenance on the website. I'd like to have a plan put in place and maybe presented at our next council meeting, and I want to be part of it, with part of the success. Our website's been around for about a year now, and the key with the website, with any website, is maintenance on it. I think we need to make sure that, that everybody has the tools necessary to get in there. For example, and I, my example was the homepage. I actually typed in parking and then ban, and I found a council agenda from 2013, and I know that that was not up to date. I'm not, now, now, if you, if you got, like I do, I'm on code red, and I get thunder something, whatever the heck it was, emails. I know it was in because I saw the police department put it in, when they put it in, and when it started and ended, but you couldn't find it on the website. I try, I want us to look at this with a resident's eyes, who's not very familiar with it, be able to go on and say, "Are they picking up trash today?" Right? And, or they're not. If there's any changes, all clear, green lights, if you will. Is there a parking ban at a moment, very quickly? So the information being put in, again, is not the problem, it's how it's being showed. I want to make sure that we're up to date on that and everything else. So at the next meeting, I would ask that we come up with a game plan of what we can do moving forward, what help you need from, from me, from us, and maybe from the residents, the feedback of what their experiences were with it, too.
I suggest one thing, and then I also have a question for you. You know, I end up just going to like the radio station to find the answer. So I don't know if you can just put like a red, like my school department just puts like a red banner, red letters across the thing, like, "School will be closed, you know, due to snow, school is closed tomorrow," or, you know, delayed, whatever it would be. And you don't have to look anyway, you don't have to try to figure out where it's going to be, you just kind of, it's right there. And I think it'd be easiest and quickest if you were able to do that, and also if you were able to give like a little bit more notice. Like I noticed last, like the Friday storm, I believe the, the parking ban went into effect at 10:00.
At 1:00 AM, right.
But I had looked, right, but I had looked at the night before at some point, and I didn't see, or I don't, you know, if I looked on the website, our website, if I just looked on the radio or TV stations, whatever, I didn't see that. So I figured, oh, maybe it won't be till later in the day like it was the prior storm. You know, then all of a sudden, you know, it's like 10 o'clock, and I'm scrambling around to like get a couple of cars moved off the street. I just think it would have been helpful for that timeframe if you were able to like let people know by the time they would, you know, well, I can't say go to bed because I go to bed at like 2:00, but I'm not going to go move cars at 2:00, but, you know, by sometime prior the night before, I think it'd be helpful, like by 9-ish, something like that.
We do, we do, we tried to get ample notice.
I noticed this storm.
However, what happened with the storm was the school department was delayed in canceling school until the morning of. So by doing that, we can't institute a parking ban, take the, the.
No parking anymore, right?
The school lots, then find out, wait a minute, you know, so where are we? So that was the only time.
I don't have a problem with it, but then it could have been, but then it could have been like maybe one. Do you know what I mean? Like if it was, I just didn't feel like there was much notice from the time the parking ban went into effect to the time that I had known about it, that's all. That's all I felt like. I mean, if, if it was a school issue, I totally understand that, that maybe the parking ban would have been just a little bit later, like noon time instead of 10:00, something like that.
Although, even though we said 10 o'clock, we really were now very strict on the 10 because we still had trash and recycling to be done, so DPW could not get out there until a little later. So he gave us ample time to get the police and DPW on board so that they could have the vehicles moved timely.
And I think people were working because I saw some cars, you know, like on the streets, you know, as well.
Sue.
To your point about the limbs, could I ask you a question about that?
Please.
On, so I don't forget, like what, what is the rule for that? I mean, can, will that just get picked up if there's not huge limbs? Like, do they need to be put in like the bags? Or if they, can they just be put out without trash?
The limb, Kevin?
Limbs.
He's right there, okay.
Sorry, yeah.
Councilwoman, that's a great question. As soon as we get an opportunity, our plan is to go out and take care of all that, everything that's on the side of the road. We'll chip it up and try to dispose of it the best we can as quickly as we can. Some of the limbs are very large, and will need assistance from the tree removal firm, but we just haven't had an ability to catch up on that, but the plan is definitely to do that.
They said some of them that were not really that big, but they got, you know, they probably got moved a little bit with the plowing, so.
Yeah, we push them off to the side to keep the roads open as quickly as we can, and certainly the recovery of that debris is on the game plan to take care of it.
Okay, because I didn't know, like, should just put it by trash?
Mary, that's a great question. So Kevin, don't put them in your compost bag or, Nathan, great question.
No, no, I feel like this was my prerogative section. I don't know, I just, I'm funny like that.
So anyways.
Anyway, sorry. I just wanted, so don't put them in a compost bag, just drag those limbs right out to the side of the road.
I mean, I could bring it up on the mine.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Well, I would say if they're small enough to fit in a compost, that they can be picked up that way, that'd be the quickest and expeditious. I'm talking about some of the larger ones that are on the side of the road that really need to be chipped up and then removed, and that will, that's on our game plan, and we plan to take care of that.
But you are picking up the compost bags, though?
Yeah.
Well, compost is picking those up.
I know, but they're getting.
And what their schedule is, I'm not sure. They may be a little delayed based on what's.
Yes, I'm sorry. I need to jump on that one. I would actually encourage to leave the, the branches out exposed where DPW can pick it up, or other arrangements will be made. Once you begin to put the compost bags out, we really don't make those runs unless there's a call in to compost in order to pick those up.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, all right.
No, it's okay. So back to, to the initial point was this, is that our website homepage should be very clear on the up-to-the-moment issues. So for example, if we are picking up trash, there should be, it should say that, because you're going to, hopefully, the website can push off a lot of the phone calls that we get, rightfully so. People have questions, they should get answers to it, but hopefully the website can answer some of them. If you haven't gone on the website, you can sign up, like I did. I get texts when there is a nasty storm coming in, I get a text when there's a, a parking, excuse me, a parking ban, get texts when things are, if there's any kind of major issue in the town that we put it in, you can get that information just sent to your phone. It's free, it's easy to do, but I'd like it, so if you're not willing to do that, and you just go to the homepage and find what you need. So at our next meeting, if we could kind of, we have a game plan of what we're going to do moving forward to make sure we're up to date, so that's all I had. Anybody else want to jump in before I go? No, okay.
You brought it up, you brought those topics up, you brought up the limbs, you brought up.
All right, okay. Mr. Sweeney?
Sorry, I hope you don't jump in. Archie, I know if you want to come up, you can, we're part of this, but we all know somebody that's been affected by cancer, is going through, or dealing with some sort of cancer illness. I wanted to let everybody know that on, it will be, it looks like March 6, from 9:00 AM to 12:00, Bristol Total Fitness will be having, will be hosting the Pedal to End Cancer. So I've been an instructor in it for the last five years, it's a fantastic event. Archie Martin, he's been doing it for a number of years, a lot of fun. It's three hours of spinning on the bike. You don't have to do the three hours, you could do half hour, 20 minutes, but it raises money to help fight cancer, which is extremely important. It's a lot of fun. So if you're interested, go to pedaltoendcancer.org. I highly recommend you getting involved, and it's a good cause, so that's it. Have a good night. Thank you.
Ms. Perella?
Thank you. Well, one of mine was about the limbs, but that could take care of.
We went out on a limb for that.
We went out on a limb, I know. I got the chairman man on the limb question, but, no, I don't, I don't have a whole lot, just Valentine's Day is this weekend, so Happy Valentine's Day to everyone, and also, it seems like it's going to be the coldest weather of the, of the winter so far, and I think we've all been a little spoiled by relatively nice weather, so I know Tony would, would say this, just to watch out for neighbors and animals and everybody else because it's going to go down to like below zero wind chill, so we won't know what that feels like because I've yet to wear a winter jacket. So that's it.
Mr. Stewart?
Well, I'd like to take the time to express to a friend and colleague a very special happy birthday, and that would be Councilwoman Mary Perella today. So happy birthday, Mary.
If we want to ask you any questions, Mary?
I'm all here with my buddies.
Yep, thank you for that, too. So I'll remember that when I'm not in the cold this weekend.
That's right.
I briefly had a discussion with the chief of police, Chief Canario, and I know we have our interim chief, Marrera, which I want to reach out. A resident and friend reached out to me while they were down in Florida, and she's an old friend of the town hall, Jane Centazzo, and she inquired about the state of Rhode Island, and other than the toll issue, I reached out to my reps to figure out if there's a conversation of this program with the emergency personnel and municipalities called the Yellow Dot Program. And talking with the chief, you know, I think going forward, we should all get together of the possibilities. I don't know if there's a cost associated with it through the police department on what has to be instituted, but this is a conversation for our residents, and what it is, is if you have a certain medical condition and get in an accident, and you obliged through liability purposes of a certificate in your glove compartment, emergency personnel can act, if you're not responsive, to know your needs other than your injuries. So it's a program that's instituted in a lot of states across the country, obviously in Florida where Jane was, so her reaching out, just trying to make the conversation. I think other municipalities have had the conversation, but nothing instituted. I would imagine this would be something not only municipal but statewide also, if it works for all the emergency. So I'll be in touch through my colleagues with the departments, and we can have that conversation, just for residents and the people in Rhode Island. I would like to just say thank you to the four Roger Williams University students that took the time out of their night to sit with us this evening during the winter. Thank you for coming out. Also, just happy Valentine's Day to all your loved ones and family, and thanks, everybody for coming out, everyone tuning in at home. Thank you, Mike Davis, and thank you, Archie Martins. I did say Martins, not Davis. There you go. So, and with that said, thank you very much.
Mr. Harrisoff?
I'd like to report on what I looked up in the nautical almanac tonight, and that is that, thinking about the approach of spring, the earliest sunset was on December 8 at 4:11 PM, and today the sunset was at 5:11 PM, so we've come one hour towards spring, which I think is a great encouragement to us all. But we still have snow, and I took a ride around toward the latter part of the afternoon of this last snowstorm, and I didn't think the cross streets looked very good, but in fact, they did look very good the next morning, so that's a positive thing. But I'd like to continue to put an emphasis on the sidewalks. That drive around late afternoon, I was pleased to see one of our private additions to the force very energetically sweeping the sidewalks a little bit west of, a little bit north of Constitution Street on both sides, and that was good. I would emphasize, I think that in these storms, the best way to clear the important sidewalks in the middle of town and on Wood Street and High Street is to do it when the sun is out, the next day after a storm. And it's interesting that on the Hope Street block, by the post office and all, if you go there at about 11:00 or 11:30 in the morning with a bright sunny day, the snow is pretty well melted, but if you wait until 2:00 in the afternoon when the sun is to the west and that area is in the shade, it's impossible to clear it up because it's back into ice again. So I, I think that I'd like to just urge that the town administrator and the DPW concentrate a little more on sidewalks to make them clear as soon as possible for pedestrians. In about a month, a little more than a month, the council will be into the important business of deciding upon the budget for next year. And I think all of us will get around and go to the bagel shop and the post office and all, hear from citizens that they don't want to pay more taxes. Because last year, we had to, under unusual circumstances, raise our taxes a lot. I met a gentleman at the lobby of an eye doctor today who was very adamant about that. He says, "I can't afford to pay more taxes, we had to go up a lot last year, and it cost me so much and so forth." Regrettably, Tony, he blames the town administrator, which isn't quite fair because the truth is that the final line on this is done by our council, but.
I'm okay with him blaming me.
We don't mind that. I used to, I used to sit in that chair there, and they blamed me, too.